Years of service. Whereas Helpline was started in nineteen seventy-two and was known as the Wolf's Bear Information System, now known as PA two-one-one Northeast Helpline. And whereas Helpline is celebrating fifty years of service to the Nor- to Northeast Pennsylvania Family Service Association of NEPA, providing services for one hundred twenty-six years. And whereas Family Service Association is celebrating a momentous occasion. Now therefore, we, the Luzerne County Council, congratulate Family Service Association and PA two-one-one Northeast Helpline upon its richly deserved recognition and continued support to our community and extends our warmest wishes for our future, complete with ever-increasing success. Do we have any deletions from the voting session agenda? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to adopt. Second vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Alright, the agenda is adopted. We have public comment and voting session agenda items only. First, we have Mr. Chom from West Pittston.
I'll pass, thank you.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Oh, not agenda. Okay, I don't have any more slips. Anybody from the public on an agenda item? Okay, hearing that, I will move on to, uh, a motion to approve minutes of the April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two voting session.
So move, second Venus.
Go call. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Agenda item number one, motion to introduce ordinance amending the twenty-twenty youth, twenty-twenty-two fiscal year budgets for Luzerne County drug and alcohol.
Motion.
Here we have a motion and a second by Mr. Wolovich. Roll call.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Dermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Wolovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes. Motion passes. Number two, motion to adopt resolution requesting a multimodal transportation fund grant from the Pennsylvania Commonwealth Financing Authority.
Second Venus.
We have a motion and a second roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Lewis Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yeah.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Wolovich?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes. Number three, motion to adopt resolution approving your request for proposals for real estate broker services related to the sale of twelve-hundred Tuscon Avenue, West Pittston.
So move, second.
We have a motion and a second roll call.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Wolovich?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes. Number four, motion to adopt resolution supporting the Pennsylvania Commission for the United States Semi-Quintennial, America two-fifty PA.
So move, load. Check it through.
First and second roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yeah.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Wolovich?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis Gavin?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Yes. Number five, motion to adopt resolution supporting the twenty-twenty-two priorities of the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania.
So move, start.
Second. First and second, roll call.
On this question, I'm going to group, but the highlighted portion, is there, uh, is there supposed to be a percentage or a number filled in? Second page.
Do we know what the first, do we know what the percentages? Ms. Krokomo, does anybody from the administration know what the percentages of residents that do not have reliable internet?
That's information that I don't have, uh, readily available, but we can, we can try to find that out.
Okay.
Because it only looks like it needs to be filled in.
Yeah.
Would we question, would we possibly pass it?
Attorney Dean, can we pass it with a blank and then fill it in with the correct percentage? Okay. Is everyone okay with that? We can pass it with a blank and I could, before we sign it, uh, we'll fill it in with the correct percentage. And I could let everybody know what the percentage is. Is that alright? Okay. Okay.
Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Wolovich?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Alright, number six, really quickly, uh, just make sure you have the updated eligibility list. There should be six people, um, under the LCC, or the Elections Board, sorry. Uh, Ms. Lawrence passed it out right before the meeting, so just make sure you're looking at the correct one. Alright, so we have appointments to board the commissions. The first one is the Election Board. Do I have a motion to open nominations?
So move there.
Motion Venus.
First and second. All in favor of opening nominations?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, nominations are open.
To nominate, uh, Jake Mangan.
Second Venus.
Cool. I nominate, uh, Rick Nardone.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion to close? Motion to close.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, opposed, okay, nominations are closed. We have two. We could go around the room for a roll call vote, state, uh, either Mr. Mangan or Mr. Nardone.
Mr. Thornton?
Mr. Mangan.
Mr. Urban?
Uh, Mr. Mangan.
Mr. Wolovich?
Mr. Mangan.
Mr. Venus?
Mr. Mangan.
Mr. Lewis Gavin?
Mr. Mangan.
Mr. McDermott?
Mr. Nardone?
Mr. McGinnley?
Mr. Nardone.
Mr. Perry?
Mr. Nardone.
Mr. Rado?
Mr. Nardone?
Five for Mangan.
Six. Either one has a majority of votes. Do you want to try voting one more time? Let's do a roll call one more time.
Is that urban? Proper procedure. Can't remember.
That's typically what we, we did in the past, is just try to get a, a second.
So five, 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 not a majority.
You have to have six. Give us a majority of the full council. Yes. Okay. Alright, we'll give it one more shot, uh, if not, uh, see what we can do.
Mr. Urban?
Uh, Mangan.
Mr. Wolovich?
Mr. Mangan.
Mr. Venus?
Mr. Mangan.
Mr. Lewis Gavin?
Mr. Mangan.
Mr. McDermott?
Mr. Mangan.
Mr. McGinnley?
I think both of those candidates are very good candidates, so for the interest of getting a member on, let you work both of them.
Mr. Perry?
Mr. Biden.
Mr. Thornton?
Mr. Mangan.
Mr. Mangan. Motion to adopt the resolution appointing Mr. Mangan.
So move, second.
Alright, first and second, roll call. It was, Mr. Urban was the first, Mr. Wolovich was the second.
Okay, Mr. Wolovich?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, now we have, uh, Luzerne County Community College Board of Trustees, uh, also, well, congratulations to Mr. Mangan, uh, the newest member of the Election Board. Um, okay, so LCC, do I have a motion to open nominations? Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay, nominations are open.
I nominate Todd Hastings, our Venus. Second.
I'd like to nominate Rob Thomas.
Second, sir.
Wow. Ms. Rob Thomas.
Is there a second? No second for? Any other nominations?
I nominate Joseph Long.
Second.
Okay, if there's no other nominations, we have motion to close nominations? Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, nominations are closed. We have Hastings and Long. If we could do a roll call vote, please state your number.
Venus?
Todd Hastings.
Mr. Lewis Gavin?
Mr. Hastings.
Mr. McDermott? Todd Hastings? Mr. McGinnley?
Joseph Long?
Mr. Perry?
Mr. Long?
Mr. Thornton?
Mr. Hastings.
Mr. Urban?
Hastings.
Mr. Wolovich?
Mr. Hastings.
Mr. Long. Six-three, Mr. Hastings. Uh, we need a motion to adopt the resolution appointing Mr. Hastings.
So move, start. Second Venus.
Roll call.
Mr. Lewis Gavin?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Wolovich?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes. Motion to introduce ordinance amending the Administrative Code at Section two-point-zero-eight, County Council Investigations and Inquiry Subsection A, Attachment One. Also, congratulations.
So move, second, Mr. Gavin.
Roll call.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
No.
Mr. Perry?
Hello?
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Wolovich?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
No. Motion is introduced. We're now open to public comment on non-agenda items. Uh, Mr. Chom? Sure, Mr. Griffin?
Good evening, members of council, citizens, Greg Griffin, Swarisville, members of the People's Committee. I just had a question for, uh, Acting Manager Kropko on, uh, the National Association of Counties. Now, I, I did email you, uh, Ms. Kropko, and you said we are a member of the National Association of Counties. And so, I still did not get the information on what the dues is. Ms. Kropko, do you know what the dues is to belong to the National Association of Counties?
We will, uh, we'll get that information to you.
Okay. What? Thank you so much. What I want to key on tonight, because I only got three minutes, the bells will start ringing. It's the National Association of Counties, and I want to, I want to center tonight on the inmates. Approximately five-hundred-and-thirty-seven inmates in the county prison. Comes down in this, the county budget, now I have a packet for council, uh, each member. The county budget is the top budget item, twenty-nine-point-three million a year. Sixty thousand dollars an inmate. My wife did the math. I couldn't. Anyway.
I know it's right, but she didn't.
Anyway, uh, if we went down to four-hundred inmates from five-hundred-and-thirty, four-hundred-and-thirty inmates, be six-million-dollar savings. Now, Acting Manager Kropko said that we're not going to escape a tax increase next year. With all due respect, that's totally impossible. It's out of line. We're not, we're not going to have, in my opinion, a tax increase. So, anyway, NACO and I, NACO has a jail population review team. We can ask for their assistance. We pay dues to them. Jail population review team. They come in, they help, and they may get us down to the four-hundred level. Six-million-dollar saving. See, we have people that are child support, not, not violent. They don't need to be in jail. They could be ankle bracelet, work release, helping their family, restitution, blah, blah, blah. We need to get this population down tremendously. So that's it. It's simple. Ask NACO to come in and help. We pay dues. I don't know how much. But remember, the National Association of Counties, and, uh, they're very bright people. They lower jail populations safely. And we don't need five-hundred-some inmates. In fact, we just had two suicide attempts. I think the staff did an excellent job. But the pressures inside, for the twenty-five-year state corrections, the pressures inside the jails is tremendous on inmates. We've got to get less of them. We'll have less suicides.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Hundred less inmates.
Any other members of the public?
Madam Chair, this is Mark Rabo speaking.
Mr. Rabo, hold on, we have someone on their way to the podium.
Okay.
Just say your name and let me know how you reside.
My name is Jim Mangan. I'd just like to, uh, take a moment to thank the members of the council for their endorsement to be appointed to the Election Board. I look forward to working with the other members as well, and, uh, doing our best to ensure that there's voter integrity and vote integrity throughout the county. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mangan.
Aye.
Go ahead, Mr. Rabo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Ms., Mr. Mangan on his appointment to the Election Board. I look forward to working with him and the other, as I have the other board members, uh, of the Election Board. Also, Madam Chair, on the work session with regards to the, uh, transportation, uh, matches, uh, I would like to remind council what transpired during the budget meetings last year and also at this time last year with regards to the matching funds, when it, especially when it came to Hazelton Public Transit, with respect to the routes for Carbon and Schuylkill County. I s- I strongly urge the council to, uh, ask the, uh, public transit to, not only if they cannot receive reimbursement from Carbon and Schuylkill County, then they should receive the reimbursement from Can Do, the organization Can Do, as they were the ones who, uh, who requested those routes be, uh, done by Hazelton Public Transit at the time those industrial parks were being, uh, developed. So, and also, in regards to the packet, uh, in the work session, on the last page, it shows that the resolution was, uh, created by a Hazelton Public Transit Board. Now, I've never seen the Hazelton Public Transit Board in the entire time I've been going to Hazelton City meetings. So I don't think they created the board because I don't remember Hazelton City Council even drafting an ordinance, creating a Board of Hazelton Public Transit. Otherwise, it would have been constituted as an authority. And if council remembers, Hazelton Public Transit by definition is a department of the city. So therefore, it is an extension of the city. I would, I would strongly suggest that council take into consideration, uh, that they, uh, ask the Hazelton City Council to draft the, uh, resolution and approve it and then have the mayor sign it, as they are the governing body that, uh, approves the allocation of funds for Hazelton City. That is all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rabo. Any other members of the public? Hearing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
What, the motion, no. This, uh, might be Mr. Griffin and other members. There was a new committee for prison population under President Judge Hughes. And they met quite frequently to look at that population. At one time, it was over six-hundred people in prison. And they were able to reduce it down to five-thirty-seven.
Yes.
So there was a reduction due to that, look at that committee. And President Judge Roe still maintains that committee. And they have the warden and several other, you know, interested parties. And they tried to do what Mr. Griffin's indicated, people who are not violent offenders, they try to, uh, categorize them so that they don't have to spend a lot of time in jail. So I mean, that's been ongoing for many years. You know, they've done a good job, I believe. Because at one point, we had over six-hundred people in that prison. You've got to remember, if they're reporting session, you also had amendment offenders, you know, no, not that, almost two-hundred people, I think, at that facility. So they've done a good job, really, to try to minimize people in prison. And the other part is, yes, finally, we're going to talk about budget. There's minimum manning requirements, et cetera, in prison. Even if you reduce the population, unless you're getting that down to a certain level where you could close a block or a wing or whatever, you still have those minimum requirements. And that's the big part of the budget, manning, staffing.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnley.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Hearing none, meetings adjourned, since that was only twenty-two minutes. Is everyone okay? Can we just go right into the work session? Okay. Um, so it is six-twenty-two. We will call the, uh, work session to order. We did the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. We have a roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Venus?
Present.
Mr. Gavin?
Here.
Mr. Thornton? Mr. McDermott? Here. Mr. McGinnley?
Present.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Here.
Any additions or deletions? Hearing none, do we have a motion to adopt the work session agenda? All in favor? All in favor, so abstentions? Okay, the agenda is adopted. First, we have the division reports, Attorney Krokomo.
Good evening, council. Uh, uh, I distributed the division report, and as usual, it's very impressive, uh, the amount of work, uh, that, uh, staff here in Luzerne County does on a day-to-day basis. I want to thank them all, uh, for their commitment, uh, to public service, and, uh, that was a privilege to work with them. If you have any questions, uh, I certainly, uh, will be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Mr. Horn?
Yeah, I have a question, might be better answered by, uh, Mr. Swet. I, I noticed on page three, and I'm just concerned because I think real estate taxes are the largest source of income into our budget every year. And, and when you look at the year-over-year numbers, the amount of real estate taxes collected thus far as of April thirtieth, which was ten days ago, is substantially less than a year ago. Down near the bottom of the page, the end of April, we collected roughly fifty-two-and-a-half billion taxes, which represents only forty-four percent of our annual budget. Same time last year, we were at seventy-one million.
What's that? The tax bills were sent late this year. So, I don't know, Mr. Swet can address it.
Is it all, is it all due to that?
Is it all due to the tax bill sent, being sent a month later?
I was going to go over it in the presentation, but primarily, yes. Uh, ninety, ninety-five percent of it is that.
Okay. Alright, that's, that's, that was just word.
Okay, moving on, we have the good segue, uh, first quarter financial reports, Mr. Swet.
I'm going to attempt to share my screen here, which may or may not work. Tell me if you see it. Can you see it on the screen in the council room? Okay. So you have in front of you the summary. I think everyone knows the first quarter report is just the summary because it comes after, well after the first quarter. Uh, the staff is focused on the audit report, and we also, the mid-year report, which comes in August, has much more detail. But I will go over, uh, what Mr. Thornton had and a few other things that aren't on the slides that I added after I sent the presentation. So the first thing is, uh, the totals for the year, uh, as of the end of the quarter, nineteen million, four-seventy-two, six-seventy-nine, which is twelve-point-three-four percent of revenue. Uh, expenses is twenty-five million, seven-ninety-three, two-thirty-six, which is sixteen-point-three-five percent of revenue. Uh, so, a majority of that stuff, and I'll just hit the highlights, not every line. Uh, our team of around thirty people for our five departments, uh, Treasurers, AP, Payroll, Budget and Finance, Admin and Assessment, which was over forty about five years ago, uh, is responsible for the day-to-day operation of all the budget finance functions. Uh, with the team primarily focused on the audit, some of the information for the current year, uh, one of the things we looked at is healthcare reimbursements from the agencies and the employees. It doesn't mean we didn't get them. It means we may have gotten them in April and didn't accrue them back to the first quarter because we're working on the audit. Uh, we had transfers as also fiscal agencies and retirement. Retirement always pays after their first meeting, the prior bill for last year. If their first meeting's in April and the accrual isn't done before the report, that gets moved later. So the biggest thing, uh, as Mr. Thornton said, I'm going to go down here to page two, uh, it's really a couple of things. So one, all the bills are mailed on February twenty-eighth. That is about three weeks later. Uh, just to let everyone in the public know, there is now a check machine inside Treasurer's office. Uh, we always took checks and cash, and now we take card. Uh, you always could pay card on the web, but I believe there's a higher charge on the web than if you do it inside the office. Uh, and, and people wanted the convenience of paying in the office, so there is a credit card machine reader inside the Treasurer's office. Uh, as stated before, the discount period ended later. Uh, one other thing to note is the, the bonding companies, we got to very near a hundred percent because obviously a lot of money goes through that office. Uh, the, the tax collectors reimburse to us by the tenth of the month. So just to get back to, uh, what Mr. Thornton questioned, you know, on, on May tenth, so there in the middle paragraph, the second bullet, we had sixty-eight-point-seven million. That was up about twelve million from prior, uh, ju- just May fifth. Also, since today, we received four-point-three million. So we are watching it. It is our biggest real estate, I, revenue is our biggest revenue item, but it is primarily the timing and we are watching it. Uh, the American Rescue funding money, we have not received our second share yet. Uh, it is expected this month. We, I was just at GFOA in Hershey. Some places have received their allocation. We did not yet. So they just started going out, so we'll be on the lookout for that. Everything is filed for us to get the other fifty-six million. On slide three, this is kind of year, quarter over year, but just to give a quick overview, obviously taxes is the biggest percentage. Some of the things we talked about, the transfers, the reimbursements, that's really fiscal agencies and our employee reimbursements. The grant information is PADCED. That information always comes in after the first quarter. We never have that on three thirty-one. On the expense side, the biggest thing is really non-personnel. And the biggest things in there are things like kitchen and groceries, architecture, imprisoned healthcare. You'll see in here, there's also the encumbrance line, so to let the new members know, when you get the percentage, the current months to current months, so starting about the middle of the page there, the year-to-date is what we spent to date. The year-to-date encumbrance, the one right in front of that is, if we're encumbering funds thinking that, hey, something should come in. I know this was brought up before. We'd love to encumber more and have a truer picture of the first quarter. It just, we've made progress, but it's not where we want to be. I'd love to sit here and say, we went in April and got all the things in and encumbered them for the first quarter report, but realistically, that doesn't happen. The bigger items we do get, so, you know, as a public had said, the prison is the biggest general fund item. We do get encumbrances put in for the prison. And that's why some of the lines like kitchen and groceries and prison or healthcare over, because it doesn't even, it doesn't just include their expenses, it also includes their encumbrance. And it's over for the quarter or slightly over from last year, but not over for the year. And those percentages, you know, twelve and fifteen percent, they change. I think the highest we ever had was like eighteen percent expenses. So AP actively does the bills for not just the general fund, but all the human services departments. They enter the information, but we have central AP, so all, any check that's processed goes through accounts payable. So there's quite a lot that goes on at this time of the year. There is a slide for questions. I'll answer what I can now. Like anytime, if you want to email me after the fact, I'll gladly answer as well. But that's the quarter in a nutshell. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swet. Any questions from council? Okay, here we go. Agenda items three and four are both regarding litigation. So we spoke about those in executive session, so let me know for the discussion in public. Number five, discussion regarding Kirby Avenue project resolution. Attorney, or sorry, yeah, Attorney Prokoma, if you want to speak to that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a proposal to reservice County Road, Kirby Avenue in Fairview Township. We are asking that we use part of our American Recovery Fund, specifically out of the loss revenue. It is approximately one point two miles long and it's on a roadway from State Route 309 to State Route 437.
Attorney Prokoma, I see that resurfacing, that take care of drainage. I know for a fact that the drainage there is horrible.
I will, I'll defer that to our engineer. Mr. Flesch, are you on?
Yes, I am. What was the question? What was the question again?
Will it, the resurfacing, will it include the drainage? Because there's a drainage issue on that roadway in Fairview Township on Kirby Road.
The estimates show some minor drainage corrections that I know there's an icing problem in two spots. And our plan is to address that also as we do the resurfacing.
That was a little quiet for those of us that are here in public, and he did say that the drainage issues will be addressed in the research.
Yeah.
Yeah. So everybody knows I'm fully in favor of fixing our county road, so I'd love to hear this. Now, I'm not familiar with driving that road. Is it like big potholes and things like that on there?
When I come out of my development, I go left or right.
That's the one you were talking about in the last meeting?
Over the years.
So, okay, so my background, we did a lot of paving back in the day. You always have to do that base repair first. In those sections, they have to be cut out and you have to do a solid base repair. So wouldn't it just be resurfacing, I hope? It includes the base repair where necessary, correct?
I'll defer that question again to Mr. Flesch. I don't pretend to be an engineer, so Larry? Did you hear that question?
Could you repeat it? It's a little hard hearing him.
Well, it might be in front of me, so let me check.
Mr. Carey, do you feel that what they have listed in here, though, existing, cleaning existing ditches? Costs a lot of money. Do you think that, again, I know you're not an engineer.
I'm an engineer, but.
I've seen what happens to that road after a lot of rain. It seems to be that that's a big issue.
Well, how about, how about this? Because this is the work session. We, I will have Mr. Flesch be, give you an exact detailed report on what everything includes, the draining and drainage. And if you have any questions, Mr. Flesch will definitely answer them.
One last question.
Really? Could we just say something? In the report, can he just also include, if this isn't a total pavement drain project, can we see what the cost would be if this is not that? If he doesn't mind just having that ready for the next meeting?
Yeah, quickly too, it's just, in the past too, after we got done paving or fixing a road, were we planning on turning this over to Fairview or keeping it?
That has not, that hasn't been a discussion with Fairview recently. I believe there is a road in Sugarloaf that we rehabilitated that will be turned over to Sugarloaf within the next few weeks. We've had historically reached out to the municipalities to do that and we really only had three takers, Cunningham, Sugarloaf and Butler Township. So we can again ask Fairview if they want to take over that road. I wouldn't count on that, though.
Excuse me, maybe Mr. Flesch could answer this, but wasn't it said that it costs a million dollars to do a mile of roadway? So to do it correctly, this is like one point two miles long. And you have six hundred thousand, again, if it's gonna be done, why not make sure it's done correctly?
I believe the estimate that we're giving was five hundred thousand dollars per mile.
Is that to take it right down, starting it over, though? Because I know somewhere we heard a mile, or I'm sorry, a million dollars per mile.
That might have covered an entire base course of the whole road. That, this is just repair the base where necessary. It's not, not tearing the road up and not starting over with base.
I guess the thought is if we're gonna do it, you want to do it right.
Well, that's what, that's what I just, that's what I just requested. If this isn't a full pavement drain, then just tell us what the cost would be for a full pavement drain.
Yeah. If we're gonna spend this kind of money, I think we should make sure one road when you're done meets all the standards and will be passable for at least twenty years or something like that. The other part is, you know, it's a patch road. Makes no sense to, you know, weather changes, freezes, and all of a sudden you look at it and spend, you know, fifty thousand or a hundred thousand and still have the same problems. Maybe a month later, it's still there. My last point for Mr. Flesch, if he could get back to us later. Typically, a lot of roads get paved and within a month they're dug up again because of a utility company. So please, if you could get back to us, are there utilities in that road? And if there is, have we contacted those utility companies, gas or water main or whatever they may be, and coordinated with, coordinated with their schedules so that we make sure they don't come back a month or two later and dig it up again? That's all.
I'll get that information.
I mean, back in the day, the water company, when we served at a local level, we would coordinate that wherever they were gonna do their water mains, we got their schedule instead of getting on our schedule. And they would go in and put their water mains through and they agreed always to pave the road for us from curb to curb. And we saved a lot of money that way. We didn't have to pay for anything.
Alright, so Mr. Flesch, if you're okay with getting us all that information sometime before the next council meeting, preferably late this week, early next week, so we have some time to look it over, that would be great. Is that okay?
Sure. I'll get the driver there for you.
Alright, thank you guys. Okay, next we have discussion regarding resolution approving classes, annual fundraiser event to be held at Loser and County Courthouse. So this is the court-appointed special advocates have an annual fundraiser gala. They want to use the Rapunda and property outside of the building. It'll be catered. They're asking if they can serve alcohol, they will provide liability insurance. If anybody has any questions on council, Mr. Corcoran is here from, who will be catering the event. If there's no. Oh, yes, also in this packet, there are a correction that needs to be made. It won't be six to seven, it'll be six to nine. Six to seven indoors, seven to nine outdoors, if everyone, any questions?
I think it's very private.
Yeah. Awesome. Thank you, guys. Okay, number seven, discussion regarding resolutions committing a local match for state operating assistance for the loser in County Transfer Station, Marty.
If I may, I don't know, Robert Fume is on his way. He was at a zoning hearing in Hazelton, our planning commission meeting, and he is on his way and should be there shortly. So if you could go on to the next.
The next one is the local match for the state operating assistance for the Hazelton Public Transit.
Mr. Sharp is supposed to be there as well. And I believe he was on his way up from Hazelton as well.
Counsel, do these need to be, do these need to be discussed tonight? Is there a timeline on these or can we move these to, reschedule these to the next work session?
I believe, at least with Hazelton, they need the match for June. But they are on their way.
Okay. Yeah, there is another meeting in May. I think, Ms. Prokoma, if you could contact them and let them know that we'll move them to the next work session.
I'll do it right now.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so no seven, no eight. We'll move back to the next work session. We're now open for public comment. Mr. Griffin.
Members of council, Greg Griffin and fellow citizens, I agree with Councilman McGinley. I mean, he mentioned something about a twenty-year road. But we have to find out why our roads deteriorate so quickly in a few years they have to be done again. Does the manager and council have any say, I know they have a vote, say on who gets the bids? And what type of materials are used? Now, they're gonna say, well, you know, these cold conditions and blah, blah, blah. Look, when you drive up to Canada and New York State where it's cold, those roads are impeccable. We have to find out what they're doing that's so successful and copy it. We can't keep spending the same money time and time again. Council and the manager should be on the bid committee and ask these people who are submitting these bids, it's the lowest bid. The thing is, it's got to stop. We cannot keep building these roads with hard-earned taxpayer money. And then they're redone in a few years. So council votes on it. Council's responsible. The manager's responsible to the taxpayers. We want the money spent. Spend the money. Spend the money well. But get the roads that Canada has. Get the roads New York State has, Virginia. It's cold in Virginia sometimes. What is going on? These companies with these bids, in my own, in my opinion, they make political contributions. This has to stop. People are fed up. Spend the money. Buy a good pair of shoes and you don't have to buy a pair of shoes every six months. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Mr. Sharp, you're good. Senator Dave Argo would like to speak for public comment. Senator, are you on?
I am. Thank you. Mayor Cusat from Hazelton had asked me to just jump in. Because of the legislative districting commission, for the first time, my senate district is going to include, of course, all of Schuylkill County, good piece of Luzerne County in the Hazelton area, reaching up to Bear Creek Township, and also all of Carbon County. And I know that the mayor is very concerned about the transportation issues there with public transportation. Even the longtime residents of McAdoo would have difficulty showing exactly where the three counties come together because they have essentially the communities in Luzerne, Carbon and Schuylkill have all grown, grown together. Certainly, the public transportation is very important with the number of new employers in that area. I think the Klein Township tax base is about the double in the next two years just because of these new employers. And so my offer to you is this, as the new senator for not only Schuylkill and Carbon, but also working with Senator Udichak and Senator Baker in Luzerne County. If there's anything I can do to help us work together with the three counties, I'm more than willing, and that's the offer I'd like to make tonight.
Thank you so much for your time.
Senator Argo, more money for roads and bridges. Be happy to really like to help along that way.
Our arms are wide open for that.
Thank you.
Okay, so I believe the two gentlemen to discuss the local match for LCTA and Heavleton Public Transit just walked in. Is that, we, we did pass the public comment, but if you guys want to just discuss it briefly, we'll go back to it and then we'll open public comment again. If you want to talk about LCTA first, please, yeah.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Bob Fume. I'm the executive director of LCTA. I just began my tenure at LCTA in October. So I'm here for, this is an annual request for local match to match what we call our operating money that we get from our assistance that we get from PennDOT. So every year, all the transit agencies of Pennsylvania get an allocation from Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for operating. And because of Act eighty-nine. Okay, can you hear me now? So Act eighty-nine passed by legislature requires a local match in order to get this operating money. So every transit authority or department in Pennsylvania has to secure the local match. And Luzerne County has been doing that for years for Luzerne County Transportation Authority. The law states that it's a percentage of your funding, of your allotment. So our allotment is seven million, six hundred thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred ninety-eight dollars for the operating fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. And the law states that you will incrementally move up till you hit fifteen percent. So at some point, LCTA will have to provide, will have to show the state that we're receiving fifteen percent of our local match. Right now, we're just about at ten percent. So the ten percent, I think it's like nine point eight, but so that, that is seven hundred fifty-two thousand, nine hundred twenty-nine dollars required in local match to, to match the operating money. I'll be glad to answer any, any questions.
Hi, Mr. Carey.
Just a few, just to ask a couple of questions about bus routes. Your buses move from Luzerne County all throughout the whole county. And correct me if I'm wrong, some of the buses up into Lackawanna County. Is that correct?
We have one route that goes into Lackawanna County. It, that route services the airport and the Intermodal in Scranton, Lackawanna Avenue.
That dictated by, that dictated by what? Usage?
Usage. It also services the VA hospital and the casino. And the social security building, I'm sorry, in Scranton.
Does Colts come down to Luzerne?
Yes, Colts meets up with us in Old Forge with LCTA and also Colts comes down to the casino.
Good point. I just wanted to set the tone for the next So you do have, your transportation routes do not stop at the end of the line between Luzerne and Lackawanna.
No, we have that one route that's. Yes. Yes, they're both county authorities.
I'm just, I think you popped in my head here talking. Is there, is it just a reciprocal agreement between two counties? Or does one county help with funding to the other county? Is this?
No, it's just, it's just this reciprocal agreement that we could cross county lines. We don't fund each other.
Alright.
Thank you.
How was ridership?
Overall, so the ridership is climbing now as we're getting back. We're about on a fixed route, which is our large buses. We're between sixteen, about sixty-three percent of pre-COVID. So we're in pretty good shape compared across the state. That's about more, a little bit higher. When you get to the shared ride, which is our vans that we transport the person with disabilities or medical assistants or seniors on shared ride vans, we're at eighty percent, which is really good. So we're getting there. And just so you know, we're gonna be doing a, I just wanted to let you know, since I'm here today, one of the new projects I'm engineering since I got here is a route analysis. So we're doing a plan, working with PennDOT to help us fund it, so we don't have to use our money. But we're going to do a study of all of our routes because they really haven't been touched in years. So there's service that needs to be put in places that's not. And then there's routes that we're gonna look at that might not be producing the way they should be, that we're gonna have to do something with. Whether just adjust them or whatever, but and we're looking more to help to working into the industrial parks. And it is the fiftieth anniversary this October of LCTA. So we'll be inviting you to some sort of event. We're gonna start planning some things coming up. We're preparing a, maybe a luncheon or something down the road and promoting ourselves the best we can. So we've, we got a lot going on.
Thank you, Mr. Irvin.
Last year, I asked for ridership numbers, which I never received from the executive director at that time. I'd like to see those because.
Sure.
I mean, I pass by buses all the time that look completely empty. So, you know, I understand that, so, you know, sixty, those words, sixty-three percent increase could be a matter of two people, you know.
Well, we're not. Well, we're not, yeah, we're not at a 63% increase, but we're at 63% of where we were before COVID. But I could get you numbers.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see some numbers because I travel with the bits every day. I pass, I pass bus all the time. Barely see 43 people on it. Do we need such large buses too? Is that something in your plan to scale down the bus size?
Well, when we're looking at this whole route analysis, we're gonna, we're gonna be moving service that's not routes maybe aren't producing the way they should be, because, you know, PennDOT gives you a certain rate that you should have on your bus exactly per hour. And, you know, if they're not up to snuff where they should be, you know, they may have to be adjusted, eliminated, new route. You know, over the years, demographics change and everything. Where do we need the service? You know, everybody's thinking out of the box now, transit after COVID, and we're working, I'm chairman of our state association, so we're all working together to try to new ideas. So a lot of agencies are implementing this microtransit. I've heard it. Work with smaller vans, like you're saying, that feed into the larger buses, stuff like that. So areas that may maybe a large bus, like you're saying, is it warranted because you don't have the ridership? That's where you come with the small van so people can still have service and then feed into. So we're gonna be looking at all of that over the next several months.
I hear, so you're glad that you look into that. But is that proof of out anymore?
Right. Exactly. Just the shifting around, you can be more efficient, you can save money and and pick up the, you know, service to people. We're here to get people where they need to go, so it's what we want to do.
Am I correctly saying, funding the local match increases from Luzerne County on 5% to 50%?
Well, it's supposed to, they said, PennDOT says it could be up to 5%. It hasn't increased by five this year. Actually, our our yearly, there was an increase throughout the state of operating money through all transit agencies. So we got more than last year, but the local match ratio did not go up 5%.
What percentage did it?
It actually probably only went one or 2% because, yeah, at some point down the road, everybody's gonna be at 15%, but that could take years. Yeah, we may not get. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
So now we have, we'll go back to the agenda again. Hazelton Public Transit, local match.
Good evening. My name is Ralph Sharp. I'm the director for Hazelton Public Transit. We also require a require a local match, just like LCTA does to the state. Our funding for operating assistance through PennDOT is $2,527,593. Our local match requirement is $198,490. As Bob said earlier, they're doing a transportation study plan. We did that last year. So some of our routes, within the next three months, we have new schedules coming out. We are cutting back where we felt it wasn't needed. And we're also adding routes. For instance, our Wolfsburg route that we're bringing people from other counties into Luzerne. We were coming up to Wolfsburg, two routes a day with our new transit development study. We're gonna be coming up eight times a day. That's how much calling we have to come up to Wolfsburg. And for example, last year, our fiscal year goes from July 1st through June 30th for state. Last year, we had 5,168 riders up into, just from Hazelton to Wolfsburg. Now, they came from Carbon County, Schuylkill County, and lower Luzerne. From our bus center up here was 5,168 riders. Currently, our new fiscal year to date, to April 30th, we're already, we surpassed that. We're at 5,255. And we have about six, seven months left to go for the year. So we see our ridership almost gonna be doubled just coming up into this area. Along with some of our other routes also. Certain ones we need to scale back, like I said, other ones we need more or routes. When we come up to Hazel, or come up to Wolfsburg, we come to the transit center down the square. We bring people to the Wyoming Valley Mall. We bring people to the Mohegan Sun. We bring people to the center downtown to go to doctors' appointments, up here lawyers and whatnot. So we are bringing people from lower Luzerne County up to this this area. So we feel we're doing a good job in our area of bringing people up here and all throughout the whole Luzerne County we are. And like Bob said, we work with LCTA. We accept passes, they accept passes. So we are working together with everything. We're meshing and whatever, you know, they need or we need. We are helping each other out. And currently, we're also in the process of building a $26 million maintenance and storage facility that we were funded through the state and federal government. And we are gonna be, we feel our completion date may be January, February of next year. And we'll also all be invited to come to Hazelton for our for our ceremony for that also.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp, Mr. Irvin.
Thank you.
Mr. Sharp.
I'm sorry.
Number one, I'd like to see your ridership numbers. Number two,
Sure.
I'm looking at this resolution that is written here. Was this meeting publicly advertised? Because that was on your website just a minute ago. There's nothing that that shows anything was advertised for this resolution?
This resolution, that's a that's a form we get from PennDOT and.
I'm talking about this one here with the letterhead on the back here that has Mayor Katsak signature.
I I have not posted it in our Hazelton paper. We were at your, coming to your meeting, so we didn't know.
Well, it says the city of Hazelton resolved and certified that the required local matching funds, I mean, if they, the city of Hazelton resolved, the council members should have resolved that, correct?
Well, normally, normally what we do is when we we come here first, then once we come to you, then we, I go back to our city council for their approval, certifying your local match.
Well, this says a resolution adopted at a regular meeting of Hazelton Public Transit, so on the 19th.
I apologize, that was an error on my part.
We're with the meeting advertised.
I apologize. That was an error on my part.
Okay, so obviously that's not true.
No, that was an error. I apologize.
Great error to make.
I was, but that was the day I met with the mayor and we spoke in this.
Personally, but it wasn't public. But but do you see what this this, to this body, this looks like it was held in a public forum? Like this meeting, and he signed off as a as a resolution, which would be an action of an authority within the confines of the city. It's misleading to this council when when something is used as a resolution. You get what I'm saying?
I understand.
Okay. So I mean, I kind of take issue with that. It's kind of like an obstruction of government administration making us lead. You're leading us to believe that this was passed.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't done intentionally.
Well, but what I'm saying, you know, try not to do that again.
I just want to follow, because I wasn't aware of any of that to you, just brought it up. Attorney Steen, is it, to your knowledge, I mean, is this allowed or commonplace for a city to adopt a resolution without having the city vote on it? Officials?
I don't know who the official, the mayor assigned it. I don't know how structures, how is the transportation already structured?
We we are a department of the city, so the mayor oversees all departments of the city. Once, once we're done, then it goes to council to make the final vote.
I think you should have went to them before it comes to us, you know, sort of work back.
Yeah, well, this is, this is what we've done. I'm just following.
Any other questions for members of council? Go ahead, Mr. Corcoran.
And I'm glad you brought that up, the reciprocal agreement Luzerne, Lackawanna County have buses go back and forth across county lines. I'm just wondering, do you have the same reciprocal agreement with the other counties that you're serving? Do they bring their buses over to Hazelton and Luzerne County?
Or or when we go into Schuylkill County, the bus system is called STS. We meet with them in Mac, at the end of McAdoo. They come up and we transfer bus, transfer each other's, onto each other's buses, yes.
So your buses are running into Schuylkill County?
That is correct.
Do their buses run into Luzerne County?
They don't come into, we meet them at the end of Schuylkill.
Okay, so you are servicing Schuylkill County?
That is correct.
And any other counties?
We serve Carbon.
Carbon. So do they?
Carbon doesn't have a bus system that.
Okay, do you have a ballpark figure of percent of ridership that your revenue comes from?
Yes.
By going to all three counties versus just Luzerne County?
So our ridership in Luzerne County is 89.3%. Our ridership in Carbon County is 8.9, and our ridership in Schuylkill is 1.8.
And I I think that's great that you're providing that service to those counties. So it's roughly 10% those counties ridership.
Correct.
And 90% in Luzerne County?
That is correct.
Is it possible, or have you asked those counties to provide 10% of that match?
I have for numerous years.
Yeah.
I know county council members. Mr. McGinley, I know when the last person was here, we've all tried. And I've done numerous occasions I've met. And it's not really heard of in the transit industry to ask other counties, just because you're going in for funds.
So you're servicing their counties and you're helping their county residents if they don't want to help support the bus company?
I mean, it's never, it wasn't past practice. It's never been done before, so.
Okay, but it's about 90, 10.
Correct. Correct.
How much percentage do you know that operates within county?
The corporate, Humboldt Corporate. Well, that's where I was getting at when we did our transit development plan study. That's why we're, our Wolfsburg route and Humboldt route was one route. We came, we came up here, we went to Humboldt, we started off in the morning at 5:16 a.m. We left, came back, did three runs, came to Wolfsburg for 8:30. We come back, we do more Humboldt routes. Well, the calling is so great with industry happening, growth in our area. That's why we're splitting the routes because service, Wolfsburg needs more service and the Humboldt's gonna need more service also.
Any opportunity to ask, see if they have any kind of funds if they.
For. Well, they're in, they are in Luzerne County. I mean.
Well, it's a lot of servicing.
I I understand. Actually, we're working with some of the plants. I mean, they're they're purchasing some frequent rider passes, so they're to eliminate people driving. So they are helping us out with funding in a different way by purchasing our passes.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go back up to public comment. Any members in the public that wish to speak?
Madam Chair, this is Mark Raybo speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank Sarah Argle for his appearance and his clarification and his his offer to the county. I would add on top of what Mr. McGinley said about the roads and bridges that I would, and I, and Ms. McDermott can validate what I'm saying as far as with the court reimbursement. You know, because the state is going to pass their budget at the end of June. So I would hope that the, that Senator Argle and Senator Baker would work towards increasing that 5% reimbursement to 10% since the cost of living increase rose to 5.6%, which is the largest increase in 30 years. And I think that is an undue and unnecessary burden on the counties and the county taxpayers, the property taxpayers. I think that is an obligation on the state to fund the court system as it is a unified judicial system. So therefore, I think the the roads and bridges and the court reimbursements and as well as maintaining the waterways like the Susquehanna is a responsibility of the state under Article 1, Section 28 of the state constitution. So this, it's not the county's responsibility or the county taxpayers' responsibility. It's the state. So I hope that the state will, in their deliberations with the upcoming budget, that they take this into account and not keep burdening the county taxpayers with unfunded mandates that will fall on the, on you guys to raise property taxes on the county taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Really quickly, we had a motion to adjourn, but just I just want to announce something. We will be filling Mr. Schnee's seat with a Republican applications. It'll be in the paper with all the requirements, but applications will be due at 4:30 p.m. on Tuesday, May 24th. No later than 4:30. So we had a motion to adjourn.
So, second.
All favor? Opposed, abstention. Have a good night.